Good evening. Welcome to our regular board meeting of Tuesday, April 21st. The audio and video recorded on our YouTube channel. If we can have an opening prayer. Chloe, please.
In the name of Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. We offer up our prayers this evening for the deceased members of our extended Halton Catholic System. Sophia Meszczewicz, mother of George Meszczewicz, secondary teacher at Notre Dame Catholic High School. Colleen Goodwin, mother of Victoria Goodwin Duncan, special education consultant at the Halton Catholic Center, Halton Catholic Education Center. Earth Day prayer. Oh God, we thank you for this earth, our home, for the wide skies and the blessed sun, for the oceans and the streams, for the towering hills and the whispering wind, for the trees and the green grass. We thank you for our senses by which we hear the songs of the birds and see the splendor of fields of golden wheat, and taste autumn's fruit, and rejoice in the feel of snow, and the smell of the breath of fresh spring flowers. Grant us a heart opened wide enough to see all its beauty, to save us from being so blind that we pass unseeing when even the common thorn bush is aflame with your glory. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
May I have a mover for approval of the agenda, please? Helena, and seconded by Diane, all in favor? Thank you. Sorry, trustee Carabella, trustee Rabenda, I'm sorry. Do we have any declaration of conflicts of interest? Oh, I'm sorry. It got me all confused there, I mean. Motions adopted and/or information received in camera.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know it's been a little bit of an unusual evening so far. Anyhow, from HR, we have retirements. Linda Birch, Margaret Denny, Pierre Gallopoe, Kathleen McKay, Angela Jodjeski, Elizabeth Trentang, and Mary Ann, I hope I don't mess this Verhagen, Verhage, effective June 30th, 2015. We have Michael Johnson, Reagan, Dor Anderson, and Martha Pickett, appointed as consultants effective September 1st, 2015, for a period of up to three years. And we have a new hire of Cynthia Contino, effective April 13th, 2015. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, do we have any declarations of conflict of interest? Seeing none? We have no presentations, we have no delegations. We have our minutes before us. If there's no questions, may I have an approver of those minutes? Trustee Antemasi, seconded by trustee Quinn, all in favor? Thank you. And before you have a summary of outstanding items from our previous meetings, move on to our action items. Trustee Marai.
So on behalf of the Policy Committee presenting policy 2-15 International Languages Elementary Program to the Board. I'll read it out. It's resolved that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and approve policy 2-15 International Languages Elementary Program as amended.
Do we have a mover? Trustee Quinn, seconded by trustee Rabenda, all in favor? Moved. Trustee Marai.
Okay, on behalf of the Policy Committee, I want to present a resolve to the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and approve policy 2-43 Voluntary Confidential Self-Identification First Nations, Maytee, and Inuit Students as amended.
Do I have a mover for that? Trustee Carabella, seconded trustee Rowe, all in favor? So moved. Trustee Marai.
The Policy Committee has been busy, so. Resolve that the Halton Catholic District School Board accept the recommendation of the Policy Committee and approve policy 2-33 Safe Arrival at School Program as amended.
May I have a mover? Trustee Antemasi, seconded by trustee Rowe, all in favor? So moved.
Just as a comment, we have quite a significant public debate at the Policy Committee on each of these, each of these items, so it's not that we're just passing these without reading them.
HSTS Bell Time Efficiency, Superintendent McMahon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We brought this forward last board meeting as a, as a staff report. The recommendation is before you. It is to utilize a third-party consultant to undertake a system-wide bell time analysis, and it'll be for both our Board and HDSP, as agreed with them through the HSTS Board of Directors. The study, the analysis, before the analysis is undertaken, the study parameters will be reviewed and brought forward to the trustees for approval, as well as, as well as an estimated cost. I did mention a number of last board meeting that trustee Carabella asked, and it was around 20,000. That's roughly the number, but we're going to bring it back, as well as the parameters, so that we're clear about what we're doing. One of the parameters might be that bell times, you know, not changed by any more than 15 minutes, as an example. So we want to make sure before we undertake the, the analysis, the study and the analysis, that the trustees are comfortable with that. We don't want to upset communities. We want to see if there's bell time efficiencies. We believe there is, because we haven't done this in a long time, and we haven't done it since the two French Boards withdrew from our consortium. Madam Chair.
Trustee Quinn.
Through you, Madam Chair. Uh, excuse me, Superintendent McMahon, why would we want to give restrictions when we're looking for efficiencies? If we say restricted to 15 minutes, and they can study something that says, well, if you move it by an hour, we're going to save you more money? Wouldn't we want to maximize their scope so that we can get the best efficiencies?
Through you, Madam Chair. Trustee Quinn, absolutely, we could. It's just that the, the chances of that being palatable in the community may be. So it, it depends. We, we did a cursory look at them. I don't see Fred here, but anyway. We did a cursory look at this about two years ago, and, and we went to wide open, so that, that will certainly, we'll bring that forward. And if trustees want us to look at that, and the public Board's okay with that, the problem with that could be that, you know, there may be savings to the public Board and costs to us. So we've got to look, we can look at all, all possibilities, and we certainly want to, but changing bell times by an hour may not be palatable in, in, in the, in the communities.
If I could follow up, please, Madam Chair. But the report will come back to us before any changes are made, is that not correct? So we, we would find out what the report says before any implementation of it.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? May I have a mover for this motion? I mean, this action item? Yes, Paul? Thank you. Trustee Marai, seconded by trustee Trites, all in favor? So moved. Thank you. We have no staff reports. Moving on to the student trustee update. Jason, Chloe, or Joel?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the first event that we have coming up really soon is our student trustee elections. We have our student trustee elections tomorrow night, actually. So we will be electing a student to replace the three of us next year. Sad face. Um, well, we're actually very happy to welcome the new people. But, um, yeah, we're excited to see, a couple of our student senators are applying as well, as well as students in, outside of student senate. So we're excited to see some new student leaders. With regards to our conference that we mentioned last meeting, we've decided on a name, so it's going to be named Our Similar Differences, and we voted on that at our last meeting. It will be May 13th at Corpus Christi Secondary School, and all secondary, students from sec, all secondary schools will be invited to this conference. We are providing busing, transportation for these students to the actual event. And right now, student senators, as we mentioned last time, are still working on their workshops. We do have a list of complete ideas, but they're kind of working out events for their workshops. But we have spoken word, visual art, accessibility, gender roles, best buddies, mental health, diversity, and sign language. So these are workshops, already the outlines are looking fantastic. They're not complete, but they should be by the end of this week. So they're working tirelessly to create intense workshops which students can learn something and think of leadership in a different point of view, which they normally wouldn't. The last thing we have talked about this month is Ontario Catholic Student Youth Day. We've mentioned the Blessed Because campaign that we are trying to implement within our Board for Ontario Catholic Student Youth Day, which is May 7th. The Ontario Catholics, Student Trustee Association, Catholic Board Council, has released a video, a promotional video that we will be playing on the day of throughout all of Ontario. And it features Rick Mercer, Kathleen Winn, amongst others. So it's a very exciting video. Jason's just going to pull it up right now. Sorry, so, as Jason's getting this ready, I forgot to mention, a group of student senators from our senate, and as well as the three of us, are getting ready to go to London the May 7th weekend for a youth conference there. So really, really excited, and it's a conference that runs every two years, so this year it's in London, and we're really looking forward to it. How's it going, Jason? It hasn't been released to, I guess, public yet. We, they've given us permission to show it to boards and at board meetings. However, it should be released within the next week or so, I'd say. So we'll definitely bring that to the next meeting, as well as email to you, once it becomes available. As of now, that's all we have to report, so we'd be happy to take any questions.
Does anyone have any questions of the trust, student trustees? Anthony Quinn.
What does the youth conference in London, is your attending?
Trustee Marai.
How many students are attending your conference on the 13th?
Oh, I'm not sure how many in total. I know from our Board alone, it's about 12, 12 students and then the three of us.
For our similar differences.
Oh, for our similar differences. I think we've asked for three students. That isn't summary, I'm sorry.
Maybe you can get back to us on that? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? No? Superintendent Penelli is not here, so the educational field trips are listed. If anyone has any questions, Superintendent Nar will answer. Trustee Rowe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In regards to the secondary school trip to Ottawa, is there any opportunity for subsidy of the, of the expenses of the Life Weekend, that Life Win Weekend in Ottawa, either from the Board or from, from the schools themselves, to encourage students to go?
Superintendent Nar?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, actually, the Culture of Life Group is a system group that we have in our Board with representatives from all of our secondary schools, and they organize, you may recall back in February, they had a pro-life dinner, dance, I guess it wasn't a dinner, it was more of a dance and snacks, but where they raised funds that go directly to this trip, spread equally around. As well, we've been providing them some system funds to help subsidize, and then the kids pay the rest. So that, the figure that you see there is, is for all of the students, the same amount, because we subsidize down as far as we can with them.
Any other questions? Okay, so now we have Superintendent McMahon with the budget report for September 14 to March 2015.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is again our monthly budget report, where we compare our expenses to date against the budget, and we provide a comparative for the corresponding period last year. The percentages do appear in line with what we would expect, with the exception of the increased sick leave usage that we refer to at the, in the first, the paragraph at the top of the second page of the report. We are in the process of finalizing or working on our average daily enrollment, the, the March 31st numbers. We, we have all of our March 31st numbers in from our schools, but in terms of the enrollment registers, but not yet through the ministries, not yet reconciled with the ministries ONSIS, which is the Ministry Enrollment System. So we will be working on that, and hopefully have a final ADE for you in the, in the May report, which will be brought to you in June. Fred, preliminary indications, my look at that was that we are up above what we expected for the March numbers, so I think that is a good news story. We'll let you know exactly where that lands once it's reconciled. We did receive a memo this week on inter, this is referred to by the ministry as interim financial reporting, so if I can reference the, the budget presentation that we just did, it's between those three cycles, so on a monthly basis. And Financial Services Staff will be taking a look at that memo that we got. It was a tweet to the, the interim reporting guideline issued by the ministry. Our presentation here is, is, takes that into account, but we will look at, they've come out with a few changes, and we're going to take those into account. We may, we've talked with other Boards on this too, we may work on trying to do this quarterly, so we'll do it on the quarters, which is, is not uncommon in other, other sectors, and we're going to consult with a few other Boards, as well as the, the memo update, and, and so we may suggest bringing some changes forward to this. Madam Chair, myself or Roxanne would be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Thank you, Superintendent Man. We have Superintendent Rowe and Superintendent, not Superintendent Rowe, he was just, Superintendent Quinn, please. Not Superintendent, trustee. Trustee Quinn?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. To Superintendent McMahon, on the, the over-budget due to increased sick leave utilization, what part of our budget does that extra fee come out of? Is that not part of the provincial allocation through the GSNs to cover those fees, or, or does that end up coming out of other parts of our budget if we go over our own allotment?
It, it is to be funded by the GSN, through you, Madam Chair, and, and I referenced a meeting that Roxanne and I were at today, provincial meeting with other Boards on the GSNs. We did bring that point up, that the funding is not adequate to cover the increased sick leave utilization that has occurred under the new MOU over the last two years. So, two things. One, the ministry is aware of that, and they've committed to looking at it. Two, through, one of, through school Boards, cooperative, who actually helps us and other Boards work on our employee future benefit calculations, they're included in, in the year-end numbers. They are doing a sick leave analysis, Roxanne, of the last four years, and that information will be presented to the ministry. So in answer to trustee Quinn's question, Madam Chair, it is supposed to be funded by the grants currently. It is underfunded, that particular line. It does roost in our budget on the salary lines, depending on which particular union it applies to.
Any other questions? Superintendent, trustee Rowe.
Thank you. Just, I was wondering, under the EPOs, we have a grant for the Pan Am Games. I was wondering what that was involved with.
Madam Chair, I do not know, but somebody in the room is going to enlighten me, I believe. Where is it? And I?
Senator Mr. Negro's responsibility.
And he's not here?
He's not here, okay.
So it's to do with the Pan Am Games?
Thank you.
Okay.
Perhaps I'll ask. Perhaps I'll ask later, thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent Rowe. No. Chair, we will get back to trustee Rowe on that, and if, maybe we can make a note, ask, and Mark, where is that, sorry? Oh, that, the top, Pan Am Games. Yeah, okay. We will get back to you.
Trustee Danko.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Going back to the previous question of regard that my fellow Board member asked about GSNs covering absences, did the, did the treasurer mean to say that the GSNs cover, don't cover certain union groups, and they do cover others?
No, Madam Chair. They are intended to cover all, through, there are funding benchmarks related to salaries and benefits included in the, in the grants. Some of them are transparent, meaning there's a salary number and a benefit number. Some of them, there's a grant, which is another item we brought up today with the ministry, that the other grants, like the Board Administration and Governance Grant, they don't break out salaries and benefits. We want them to, so that we can, we can see whether, where, how our costs line up with those. But the intent of the GSNs is to cover all union groups, non, non-union or union positions within the Board.
Thank you. Anything else? Moving on to capital projects report, Superintendent McMahon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, this is the report we bring forward every month on our capital spending. We've, we've continued to tally it back to 1998, when the new, the new funding model came in for both operating and capital. There's been several evolutions and iterations of that capital funding model, which I alluded to in the, or Roxanne alluded to in the budget presentation. So we actually show our building costs in this report, our, our land costs we spent, and also our debenture financing that has gone on in the past, which the ministry is giving us grant money to repay those debentures. We no longer, those debentures have come to an end, they, we have to pay them off, of course, but now our capital funding is dollar for dollar, meaning at certain points in time during the year, as is alluded to in the, the paragraph, the last paragraph on the first page of the report, we get money forwarded to us at two points in time, and the ministry gives us a grant to cover the interest costs incurred between those two points in time. And myself or Roxanne would be happy to answer any question, or Mr. Carvaggio would be happy to answer any questions trustees may have.
Questions? No? Seeing none? Moving on to Superintendent Nar with the delegation response to the Elementary Middle Years International Baccalaureate Program.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. As you recall, there was a delegation two weeks ago with the purpose of making our Board aware that a primary and/or middle years IB program should be implemented in our system, and more specifically, the, the presentation focused on St. John's School in Oakville being considered for this program, for a middle years program. So the report before you outlines the answers to the questions that were asked following the presentation. To highlight a few things, we have not explored the feasibility of a middle years IB program in the past in this system. The costs are outlined for you in the report, and we broke it down in two ways. There's estimates for the startup costs, which would take place two years prior to accreditation by the International Baccalaureate, and that total is 552,000, and that's an estimate, based on their requirements. As well, the annual operational cost estimates are there with an enrollment. We just factored in an enrollment of about 120, which represents, which would represent one grade for each of the possible middle years IB program, and that's at 140,500. Around the timelines, and, and I think the question was asked about the shortest timeline to have an IB program in place. If you're looking at it from a requirement from the IB perspective and reviewing the IB program, the short answer for that would be about three years. The requirements for implementing the IB program are found in the report, and some of these are new requirements that have changed a bit since we implemented the secondary diploma program. This includes a feasibility study that must be done, training for the teacher and the coordinator prior to the startup. And as you're aware, the diploma program for the secondary IB is currently in place at St. Thomas Aquinas. This summer, the 2015 graduating classes, the first class since the program became, became accredited to graduate. Superintendent Penelli has advised that three years of data and profiles on graduates will need to be studied, and at that point, the International Baccalaureate would come in and review the program that is in place. Another question that was asked was around the, given the boundary reviews, what would be the most suitable time to determine enrollments? So again, I've outlined that in the report. As you're aware, there is a secondary boundary review going on currently in Oakville that will be complete at the end of this year, and implemented for 2016, '17. And as well, we've just received the PAR guidelines that will begin the, and we will begin the process of implementing a policy and procedure as outlined in your report with the dates. Following this policy development, the Board will then share the next steps in reviewing the accommodations across our system. And it's important to note here that while the delegation would like to see the IB program at St. John's, it is necessary to look at feasibility of such a program across our entire system, and, and so that incorporates looking at enrollment across the system. The last question that was asked was if IB was not suitable at the moment, what additional enrichment programs could be provided to better support the students at St. John's School? And I think it's important here to clarify that some of the information, about some of the information that was presented at the last meeting. So currently, St. John's in Oakville has two programs that run out of the school, along with- So currently, St. John's in Oakville has two programs that run out of the school along with the regular JK to eight programming. The structured teaching class is running there and it uses three classrooms. And it's designed for students with intellectual developmental disabilities. And as well, there is a Yoda program, which is use overcoming depression and anxiety that is run out of one of the classrooms there. I believe when the presenters were speaking about this, they were looking for other programs such as French immersion. Currently, there is a program review going on for early French immersion. And while senior staff regularly review the locations for all of our programs, such as extended French or instrumental music, we review this based on need and space. We are conducting a general program review for elementary over the next couple of months and that'll be completed by the end of June. This, of course, would not be seeking changes for September, as things are set for September at this point, but rather a longer-term look. I've included other information in the report that goes a bit beyond the questions that were specifically asked by trustees, just so that you have some background. I'd like to draw your attention to the sections in the report on programs at St. John's, extracurricular activities, and the technology use at the school. So I'm hoping it'll clear up any questions that were raised during the presentation. St. John's runs a full Ontario curriculum with a focus on Catholic graduate expectations at the school for all of the students. While it is a small school with a very small staff, you can see that extracurricular activities outlined in the report. You can see that all of the staff really pitch in to ensure that the students have numerous opportunities to participate in these extracurricular activities. And there's a balance of sports, academic, and other interests. And a lot of those come directly from what the students are asking for. The staff are very dedicated and give a lot of time to ensure that the students get a full experience. With a small staff, it means a lot of them are doing double and triple duty in trying to offer these activities. Finally, I've included the technology use information at the school. And I think it's wonderful that council has purchased and supported the technology in the school to help supplement the things that are provided through our system. And I've provided information there for you with some details on how it is used across the entire student body from JK right through to grade H. And I've seen it in place in school visits and have talked to staff. And I'm confident that it's well-used in the school. I can tell you the four-year-olds in that building know a lot more about using the iPad than I do. So I've shared the recommendations in this report about a number of things that would need to be in place before we could do a full feasibility study of the middle-years IB program. And you'll note at the bottom of the report, there was a lot of contributors to the information in this report. So I really wanted to acknowledge them and thank them for that. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, trustee Intomasi. Trustee Murray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you. I did also notice how many people worked on this and I appreciate it. I think it's a very good and thorough baseline for us to look at. The one thing I'm not seeing and helping is it's there because I just don't see it. Do we have any idea what it would cost per student, like what they would be paying versus what it costs? Because I see it's about $1,200 per student. So I'm wondering, you know, what kind of fees that we'd be able to charge to offset any of the costs if this becomes any kind of reality down the road?
I don't have that direct information on what we could charge. I know that there is a fee for the exam writing and we would be able to charge the students for the exam writing. But I'm not sure, that would be part of our study, what we would be charging our students. Currently, I don't have the figure off the top of my head what we charge our secondary IB students. But I know it's within the range of what's being charged across the province.
Trustee Murray?
Yeah, I would also like to thank staff for the work they went into this report to short notice too, for a couple of weeks. And thanks to the delegation for that part. You don't see many parents come to this board very often. It's nice to have the community involved and come to us with concerns and a lot of positive feedback as well. I have a bunch of questions in here, but I don't want to monopolize the time. I just thought I'd start off with some and maybe there's more discussion that some other trustees want to come in. I see that the startup budget costs for IB, when we're talking about it, that's over two years, I assume. And that's why the NYPD program coordinator's $210,000, I assume it's salary for two years. What was the program, what was the budget startup cost for the two years for the secondary IB for St. Thomas?
Through you, Madam Chair. That could be something we could bring back?
I just, I wanted to get a feeling of, you know, the scale of these numbers. Because to trustee Intomasi's point about the operational budget costs and what the, you know, the business plan of something like this, it's based on 120 students. And maybe that's because we were talking about St. John's specifically. But I think you need to look at it in different, at different levels of student enrollment and based on how many are students at the school or at our facilities already and how many are coming from other facilities as well. I'm going to skip down to, so it would be helpful to have that number, but maybe informally. I don't know if it needs to come back as a report or anything like that. The most striking thing in this report to me was the commentary on page 49, which stated, "Currently, there are 191 students at the school, which is 71.2% building capacity utilization. Enrollment projections for the 2015-16 academic year is 168 students, which would represent a 62.6% building utilization." So, we're looking at an almost 10% drop in the school population. And I just think it would help to get a bit of background on why senior staff believe, is it, maybe it's the graduating grade eight classes so large? Or could you provide a bit of feedback on that, please?
Well, I can give you a bit of an answer with that. It is a factor of the number of JK students that are coming in and the number of grade eight students that are going out. So, the enrollment is declining. It's not a growth area. There's no more building going on. And so, that's the main reason for the decrease in size. And it has been on a steady decrease while I was there a number of years ago and it was decreasing at that point. So, it's just the class sizes are going down.
And the, I guess, part of the concern is that not only is that happening, but my understanding, this may not be the full picture, is that some families are both moving to the public board, which has a fairly large facility in the area. But also, other schools in our board, like they're going to other programming at other schools in our board. And the thing that concerns me most is apparently we're sanctioning presentations going into the school and attracting families from this board and to encourage them to go to other programming, other schools. I think it's great that we offer programming throughout. But I guess, I think there's a serious concern when we're not trying to keep families at the school and have a minimum level of population where we can support, we can support the good programs going on. But also, you know, better utilize the large numbers of iPads and other things going on at the school. I was wondering if we have an idea of how many other schools are decreasing at our board by over 5% year over year? Do we have a-
I have to ask Fred about that. In your report, this afternoon by Superintendent McMahon, we knew that one of the schools was under 200. And in the next couple of years, there'll be two more schools who will be underpopulated under the 200 mark. So, that's coming on in the next two years.
Further?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to congratulate trustee Murray on championing the parents of St. John's. The turnout was fantastic. Probably 10% of the parents were here, if we look at the numbers. But I think their interest in the IB program was a call to us to please help them. It seems to be a very expensive proposition for a small base. But they're asking us not to just see the end of the road as the eventual closing of their school. So I think they're asking us to look at ways that we can work with the residents of that community to ensure that the school is vibrant and attracting every student possible in the area. And we're not just throwing up our hands and saying, "It's inevitable. Let's wait and see what happens."
Trustee Danko?
To put it another way, Madam Chair, to the treasurer, is there enough wiggle room for $500,000 to support that program?
Uh, no.
Trustee Intomasi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In listening to trustee Murray and what trustee Danko was just asked, my concern also, because I know we're going to be looking at boundaries, et cetera, et cetera. And the concern is, as trustee Murray was saying, you know, if in fact there are other programs from our own board going in enticing parents out. If you get three or four schools that are all around the 200 mark, they're all going to be trying to steal from each other with specialized programs. And that's something I think we have to take into consideration moving forward, is that we're just stealing from our own community to keep certain areas more vibrant. So I guess we just have to look at that as we go forward.
Trustee Tritz and then Carabella, please.
On page 51, and it's been spoken to a couple of times, referred to about the structured teaching class. Would someone know a number of students that are currently there? And again, for the Yoda program, but recognizing that the Yoda program is a 10. But just some idea of the students in those classrooms, the numbers that are being occupied currently.
Sure, through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Tritz. Currently, there are eight students in the structured teaching class. Their needs are fairly complex. We have, we can go up to 16 in the class, but we generally don't. The numbers are usually between six and 10, 10. The Yoda program is more of a rotational program. It's run through Woodview. And so it's not students that are in the school necessarily on a full-time basis, but come in for a period of time with an eye toward transitioning back to their home schools. So, the number of students that would be in the Yoda program at any one period of time would fluctuate.
What's the largest capacity or what generally are you seeing, six, eight, 15?
It really can vary. It wouldn't be up as many as 15. Around between eight and 10. It's the use of one classroom for that purpose.
Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. At the delegation, the lady suggested that there's a 10% reduction if there's already another IB program running. I didn't notice that reflected in the numbers. I believe that's just in the initial registration. And I believe that Superintendent Penelli put those numbers together, but I believe that is factored into those startup costs.
Thank you. And I had another question. So when it was time to decide for the IB for the secondary panel at St. Thomas Aquinas, how much were the, you know, the numbers in front of you and not knowing what's going to be ahead? And how was that decision made with a leap of faith into it? Or was it really all worked out on paper with just-
Good question, through you, Madam Chair. It's a good question. The details of that is with Superintendent Penelli. And I believe it would have been four or five years ago when we embarked upon that journey to go down and investigate the IB program. So we can certainly give you that information.
Chloe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to kind of give a student perspective on specialized programs. Currently, I'm at Bishop Reading High School, taking the AP program. And that transition from grade eight to grade nine was definitely difficult because I'd gone from being in a classroom with kind of all of my friends and all my peers. And then I went to the specialized program in grade nine. And it was definitely difficult to have that transition because things that they were asking from us and things that they were expecting, I had not learned or I wasn't familiar with. So it was, instead of enjoying that grade nine experience and enjoying meeting all these people and being in this big, brand-new school, I was definitely struggling in my classes and I didn't know what to do and how to do certain things. So I definitely think that with having a program like this in elementary school would make students, that transition from elementary school to high school, it's already tough enough. But it would make it a bit easier having them be familiar with the IB program and having gone through the steps of being in that in elementary school, transitioning onto high school where that jump isn't as big as it normally be when you're going from kind of being in a normal classroom to being in a classroom where you're dealing with different things and where it's kind of more specialized and it's more demanding of you. And I know that the AP program can kind of be less, I don't want to say less demanding than the IB program, but with the AP program, you can kind of structure it around where if you're good at math, but you're not good at English, you can take AP math, but take kind of academic English. But I know that with the IB program, it's a whole package and you have to take on IB English, IB math. And they ask for community service hours as well to make you kind of like a well-rounded person. So I think definitely that if it's, this opportunity has come to the table. And if we're able to take it, I know finding half a million dollars is not easy. But I can take on a second job if we need the money. But if we can definitely see this in the next couple, in the next couple of years coming on, I would definitely think that it's a great opportunity to take on. I also see it's kind of hard to invest that amount of money in such a small student population. But maybe if we can find the balance of putting it into a school with bigger, with a more student population where it's kind of like accessible to more students and finding kind of like a happy medium in between that, then I think that it's definitely something that we should look forward to and we should try to, try our best to bring into our board.
Thank you, Chloe. Your perspective is always welcome. Thank you. Is there another board that has middle-years that we could look at? No, that was in Vista Verde. In this, but like right around here? Yes? Can you give me the name of one, Paul? Okay. All right.
So I thought actually the report well identified different timelines to even bring up the subject again. If we want, if it's the will of the board to bring up the subject, maybe it isn't. And the fact that we're going to be looking at, report on programming across the board in June. So I think it's reasonable to kind of look at the timelines that we're already working in and say, "Hey, maybe we bring up the question then or see how it works with the other programming we're looking at." And also, looking at the entire board, not just one school community. But I feel that this delegation brought up an important point and highlighted the issue of enrollment at our underutilized schools. And I wanted to have, I guess, a quick conversation and get a better understanding from how trustees think, how we should act on that and not just wait for our accommodation reviews, but rather see, like, a 10% change in the population of the school is significant. It's not only at this school, it's at other schools in our board. So I'm wondering if we need to better understand the feelings of the, of these communities, these specific school communities where this is occurring. So I would be interested in seeing if we got a list from the staff of schools whose populations are decreasing, let's say 5%, 7%, 10% a year, and see if we did some sort of confidential survey from the parents and families at those schools themselves to get a better understanding of how they feel of the school, about the school community, about, you know, about what other programs are being offered to the school, if they're enticed to go to other schools in the area. But to ensure that in between us making decisions on how we're dealing with all these low-population schools, that they feel like the board is listening to them. So I think that we're blessed to be a board where there is significant growth and it's obviously benefited us significantly from a budgetary perspective. But I think we have a responsibility to these people to listen to them in this difficult time when, you know, it was even said that there is uncertainty. So, I'd be interested in hearing what my colleagues have to say about that. And then potentially, in the future, next board meeting, craft a motion around that for an action item.
Joel?
I think that trustee Intomasi hit it right on the head when she said, like, the IB program is obviously something which would be very important to our students. And it would be different if it was, if St. John's was the only school that was struggling in terms of population. But when you look at the amount of schools that are now declining slowly, maybe not as fast as St. John's, but still declining, it would kind of create competition. And I'm not sure that it would be worth the money if there's not the population around to withstand. If the population around it is growing regardless of whether the IB program is there or not, I'm not sure that we could attract as many students. And then would we be pulling away students from surrounding elementary schools is my concern. But I think Chloe's right in saying that the AP program or the middle IB program would be an- would be an interesting, um, element to add to HCDSB. Um, so if, if that could be implemented at a higher populated school, I think that'd be interesting to see. Just a thought.
Jason?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm actually going to go against both my co-trustees in this case. Um, I disagree with the IB program personally. I've seen it in action. I haven't had it in my school, and I've never been a member of it, but I've never liked it. I never liked the advanced placement program either. And that's simply because I find that not the students feel like they're elitist, but I feel like the funds are being given to the top ten percent rather than the bottom ninety. I mean, with the five hundred thousand dollars, we can do a lot of things with it. And I remember thinking, um, when the people were here last week, I didn't say it, obviously, um, I remember thinking, when she was saying there's no program, there's, I mean, she was talking about regular education. She was talking about the education system that ninety percent of the people in this room were educated by, and I kind of felt like, oh, is this system not good enough anymore? Like, why are we pouring money into the top ten percent when we could raise the bar and make everyone learn at the same level? It just seems like to me, not that it's a waste of money, but this money could be spent in much better ways by eliminating this program entirely and making everyone target, you know, the people that like sports, target the people that like or learn, you know, with, with stuff, or with, you know, different objects rather than academically pouring more and more accreditation or the International Basketball Program onto them, if that makes any sense.
Thank you. Trustee Rabenda, and then trustee Mc-, uh, Superintendent McMahon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very interesting comments. Thank you. Um, with regard to this, uh, I can understand Paul, trustee Marai's, uh, feelings, and I don't disagree with them. But, um, what we're going through in some of these areas is very simply demographics. It's an aging population, and yes, there is that larger school in Oakville, but then you'd have to look at the fact that the other board has doubled the population that we have, and, uh, we have several schools in that particular geographic area. And if you put them all together, maybe it'd come to at least fifty percent of eight hundred. I don't know. Um, I like the report that was done, and I realize it was done in very short time, so I, I do commend the staff. Uh, I would be interested in seeing us pursue the, um, suggested steps and the conclusion. I think we have to look at, um, our boundary reviews and go through all of that and see how that all falls, uh, falls out, uh, right across the, the board. And we have to look at some, um, studies of program and see if we do have any gap analysis going on. And then I think we decide, do we want this program philosophically, academically, from a curriculum basis? Do we want this program at the elementary level? And then if we do, decide where we want it. And it may not be where we think we want it right now. So just an idea.
Thank you. Superintendent McMahon?
Just wanted, uh, give the opportunity to Fred to comment on enrollments, uh, vis-à-vis what was in the report. Uh, trustees are now copied on the enrollment reports, uh, pardon me, every month, yeah. And, uh, so I'm looking at them right now, and St. John is the only school below two hundred. Uh, we could trend that as, as trustee Marai indicated, uh, how it's been over the last few years, uh, and, and, you know, we could look at the four-year projection where it's going. But Fred, I just wanted to get your take on, on that. Thank you, Paul. Through the chair. Um, just to answer trustee Marai's question in terms of why some of these schools are witnessing these five, ten percent drops, uh, it, it really is just some of the, uh, later grades leaving the, the, the school itself. So a lot of times you've got high numbers in grade six, seven, eight, and on the following that, you've got, you know, a drop of ten between the next grade. So as new students are coming in through, uh, junior kindergarten, they're not being replaced as to what's coming out. So that's why you're seeing those drops. And eventually you do see them plateau as, uh, the school stabilizes. That is kind of the, the story of what's happening in, uh, what I would call probably cent- the central belt of Oakville, the R aging communities. And I think, uh, trustee Rabenda hit the nail on the head. Uh, this is the reality that we're, we're seeing now, is that there are far fewer students. Um, I guess another point I'd like to add to it is just, uh, maybe a word of caution in terms of when we're exploring different program opportunities. Um, there's all, there's oftentimes a, uh, maybe a notion that introducing new programs will generate new students. Now, not saying that it's not true, but again, there's a very limited pool of students that currently exist between our board and the public board. So sometimes we're pulling from each other's, or each other's student pools. So again, just sometimes new programs are inevitably, as we're already seeing with the French immersion, they may pull from other schools. So sometimes it's not always the answer. Sometimes it's just the reality of a declining neighborhood. Um, I think other than that, again, uh, as Paul mentioned, we do provide the monthly enrollment statistics, and, uh, if you, we'd be more than willing to provide you with an analysis as to what we foresee in the next few years as to schools that are witnessing these five to ten percent declines. Madam Chair, and, and while we're on that, and, and we had a query from trustee Danko on the, the capacities, which appreciated, we just, because we just introduced it in the February, with the February numbers. So the March ones that just came out, we're comparing, uh, the enrollments to, to the capacity to show utilization, given, uh, A, what we've just heard from the ministry in terms of underutilized facilities, and the grants are going down to reflect that, and B, we've, we've, we're considering, we're, we're updating our school com-, uh, school consolidation closure policy and procedures with the PAR coming out and the, the partnership guideline coming out. And so we wanted to put more information in here so we could see just how utilized, uh, these schools are. And, and it is of interest to, obviously to us, but it is of interest to the ministry too, um, because that's, this is a problem that exists right across the province. We're fortunate, and Roxana again, and I, we're at a provincial meeting today, um, there's schools still out there that, with a hundred students in them that are still open. And so we're fortunate that we haven't had to, uh, you know, go down that path. Um, but certainly we'll do whatever we can to assist trustees in, in, um, you know, analyzing the numbers. Um, no one would close a school lightly. I don't think anyone in the room would do that. Um, so I certainly do appreciate the discussion, and we'll do everything we can to support and inform any decision-making.
I just did want to comment that parent feedback is always interesting, and we can discover new things. Um, so it's always valuable to see why they would be leaving, or where are they going if they're going to say, if it's anonymous, they wouldn't mind saying where that, that child is going. Thank you.
Madam Chair, how does Policy I-9 get triggered?
How does it get triggered? Uh, it, there would be a report from the director to the board, uh, initiating or considering the initiation of an ARC. But we're still, we're not there yet. Again, if I may, Madam Chair, we need to review our policy and procedures in light of the, the pupil accommodation review guidelines that just came out, version three. We're working on, uh, with, with our six, uh, GTA Catholic boards to develop a policy, uh, and, and with the timeline. Now, that timeline is pretty aggressive, too. We're going to try to hit it. Uh, we may end up, you know, in the first, potentially in, in maybe the first or second board meeting in September, approve the policy and procedure then. That's, you know, that could happen. And then from then, we would have to have that in place. And the ministry has made it very clear that you need to, uh, ch- uh, change your, your, your school closure consolidation policy and our facility partnerships policy. Both of those need to be changed before you embark on any accommodation review process. So we're taking it one step at a time, and the report tried to give a, a quick stop. At last mu- last, uh, the board meeting two weeks ago, uh, we brought forward the, those new, uh, comp, the PAR three and, and the facility partnership guideline, uh, with the timeline. So again, they'll be on a, a topic of conversation at, at policy and board meetings coming up as outlined. We want to get them, them done. Uh, and again, not to belabor that topic, but the whole point was to try to get it done as early in this trustee term as possible, so that, uh, a board who does potentially make a decision on a, on an ARC, a closure or consolidation of a school or both, uh, that the, that the actual closure of the school, w- were it to go to, to fruition, would happen with the same board. Not one board makes the decision to close it and then leaves it to the next board to carry it out. So that's where we're heading right now. And the timeframes in the new PAR have been, um, they've been shortened, if you will, to expedite the process because the experience that had been seen by boards who have done closures, what those, those, uh, you know, decisions were prolonged. And either you're going to close a school or you're not, and you're going to do it for good reason and an informed basis, or you're not. And, and so, um, again, we will be bringing forward reports as indicated on that, and we will absolutely have trustee involvement in, in the entire process.
Trustee Danko?
Madam Chair, just to refer back to that Policy I-9 again, um, section ten of that policy says that, uh, a percentage of a school's population, thirty percent, could sign a petition to have the review, have the process of the school closure reviewed. Um, and then that refers to Appendix B. So how, how would that process work? And do you think that'll be retained in the new PAR?
Um, Madam Chair, I, I, I don't know right now. We have to take a look at it. Fred, I don't know if you have a comment on that. I'm, I'd have to look back. I haven't looked at it in, in, uh, that particular clause, uh, in some time. Um, it, I, I couldn't make a call right now. We'll have to look at it. And it, it will come through to policy committee. This is one that, you know, as we indicate, will likely have first reading and then second and third reading. It'll be, you know, it'll go out there for consultation, too. So whether that survives or not is sort of up to trustees. I, Fred, I don't know if you have any, in the initial draft, are we considering something like that? Through the chair, just to clarify, trustee Danko, are you referring to, uh, the parents could sign a petition to approve or trigger an accommodation review for their area or school? What, what I'm asking is, is, yeah, I just want clarification that I can potentially answer the question.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'm referring to page six of eight on Policy I-9, section ten, point zero, ten point one, and ten point two, administrative review of accommodation review process. Ten points two states that a petition signed by supporters equal to at least thirty percent of the board's student headcount could seek a review, review the process.
Through the chair. Um, to answer correctly, I would like to take the time to review the policy in itself, uh, to get exactly the, uh, the workings of that clause. Um, however, to answer the second part of your question as to whether or not something like that could be found within the next, um, pupil accommodation review policy, um, it's definitely possible. So maybe I'll just provide a little bit of clarification as to what the process is with the six, uh, GTA Catholic boards. What we're looking to do right now is generate a generic policy. By that, I don't mean that we don't want to, um, add any detail to it. We just want to make sure that the, the base level policy itself is in compliance with the ministry guidelines. From that point forward, what we will do is bring it individually to our own boards and adapt it to our own specific, uh, needs, uh, that are more contextual, let's call it. And then again, we will have some further support from legal counsel that will tell us whether or not it is still in compliance with the, um, the ministry guidelines. All that said, if that's something that we'd like to entertain within the next one, we can more than likely add it into it, and I guess we can have a discussion as to exactly what we're, we're looking for. Um, there's also, as Paul had mentioned, there are two different processes now that the, the ministry has opened up as additional tools. We have the regular process, which is the regular timelines, uh, which is approximately five to six months. And then there's a modified timeline where the board can select specific criteria as to what would trigger a modified accommodation review to speed up the process. Um, and that could also be a place where we could put such a, um, I guess, a, a condition or a criteria. Um, so I, I hope that answers the question in part. We'll come back to you.
Sorry, Joel?
Um, I just wanted to ask for clarification. Um, when a school experiences, uh, demographic of lack of population, um, is it common or consistent that it gets repopulated in years to come? And if so, how many years does that take usually?
Through the chair. Um, that's, that's an excellent question, actually. And fortunately, it is not something that we've been able to answer yet because it hasn't occurred in a lot of situations. Uh, this is a common topic of discussion that we've had at, uh, both our Students' Projection System, uh, user group, as well as, uh, OASBO. And we're trying to find as to exactly when does that neighborhood regenerate itself. And from what we're seeing right now is that it's, it's not as quickly as we would have assumed. It's not very, uh, it's not as cyclical as we would have liked it to have been. Uh, again, we're, we're continuing to look at that component of it and trying to see if there's any indication as to when that would occur. But right now, it seems like it's, it's, it's a long ways out. And we're not seeing that kind of regeneration. We would probably have anticipated a few years back, or ten, twenty years ago, when we thought maybe the curve would go up again. So.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thanks, Frederick. Um, attached, we have our CPIC minutes and our policy committee minutes from the last meetings. Uh, if you have any questions, uh, Superintendent Overholder Cipriano? No? Uh, attached, we also have six letters in regards to the health and physical education curriculum, for your information. We have not, we don't have to go back in camera, but we are going to stay afterwards. Uh, we have no resolu- we have no absentees, so no resolution. So if we may have an adjournment, a motion for adjournment, please. Trustee Rabenda seconded by trustee Rowe. All in favor? Thank you. And we have our closing prayer tonight by trustee Tritz. No, we don't.
Actually, um, a nice Hail Mary always, uh, helps. So, "Name the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. We come to you, our Lady. Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord is with thee. Blessed art thou, most old women, blessed is the fruit of thyself, Jesus. Holy Mary, Mother of God, pray for our sinners, and pray for our deaths. Amen."